This meeting is now called to order. Just for clarification, we do have Commissioner Boyd on the line. So he'll be a part of our meeting this morning to, so we can complete our quorum.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, sir. How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Doing great, doing great. Are there any ideas from the public? Hearing none? Approval of the agenda, we do have one modification to remove an estate hearing for Randy Garcia. So I will need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I moved that we approved the agenda as amended for October the 3rd, 2024.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. Any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Any questions on the purchase order log? Everybody good?
Yes, sir.
Good here. Thank you, T T.
Yeah, we have no internal budget revisions this week?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Have change of status. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zier, Community Corrections Director for Ireland Delaney. As a DRC therapist with an annual salary of sixty-five thousand effective October 5th, 2024. I'm sorry, October 15th, 2024. New hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Kevin Day. As a Deputy Court Marshal with an annual salary of thirty-nine thousand seventeen dollars effective October 16th, 2024. Change of status received from the Honorable Shelley Schoffer, Circuit Clerk for Lori Nieder. For change in salary due to calculation correction, her salary will change from sixty-two two fifty-eight to fifty-nine eight fifty-two. Effective October 1, 2024. Change of status received from Chad Weinberger, Deputy County Administrator for Noel Ebersole. This is a salary adjustment transfer from Court Marshal to Home Confinement Officer. With a salary increase from forty thousand six hundred and seventy-eight to forty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Effective October 1, 2024, for which the transfer was previously approved. Change of status received from the Honorable Larry Hess Assessor for the filing. For an increase due to completing the land studies cost modifier West Virginia Tax Division Training effective October 1, 2024. Rhonda Lowden is going from sixty-nine thousand seventy-five dollars to sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Cody Legg is going from fifty-four thousand to fifty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty. John Street is going from seventy-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-nine to seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine. James Coleman is going from forty-two thousand three hundred to forty-three thousand fifty dollars. Change of status received from the Honorable Larry Hess Assessor for Thomas Everhart. For an increase due to completing training as a field appraisal. His salary will go from thirty-seven thousand to forty-one thousand effective September 1, 2024. Herb Marty Roberts, Fire Chief for Berkeley Fire, removed Brian Golladay, Joe Rupenthal, and Noah Syke from payroll. Effective September 27th, 2024. We do have, I mean, we'd be able to approve the minutes Commissioner Barnhart was not present. Nor is he present today. So we'll just leave that as it is. Have a award acceptance for fiscal year 2020 hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant. This grant is a reimbursement for the commodity flow study and it is of zero match. And just so everybody understands that commodity flow study gives the emergency management and emergency services. A look at the rail and the highway of what hazardous materials are going through our county. So that's a very valuable piece of information for them. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved.
It's been properly moved in second. Any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. Hess, have assessment law correction and importments?
Morning.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
I do have a few this morning. First, I would have the personal property exonerations. We have a total of seven. And for the reasons that's listed there, most of them were double billed. You see the one there for?
The big one.
Yeah, but that raised an eye.
You know, the girl that keyed that, I went over that with her. She has no idea. I had all the information in there was correct about the vehicle, the twenty-four tracks. And there was an area that you can put these numbers in. I didn't even remember. I don't know where it come from. Somebody had to put them in there. I don't know. I don't know where the system did it somehow. But it was, it's just, you know, it's a mystery. I keep finding that reason why they're in there. But anyway.
And the cost of the vehicle.
Oh, yeah, it's, but we have to correct that one, definitely. But. Total, if you total all seven that was up, come up to fifty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. And of course, that wasn't paid or there was no money transferred. It's just, you know, we're just getting it off the books. But at any rate, I need you to correct, approve that one.
Yes, sir. I need a motion to approve the seven personal property tax exonerations for the reason of office error in the amount of fifty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents.
They're moved. Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any further questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it.
Thank you. Do you have, for real estate, we had two, we had to correct that the farm values did not get keyed. On this, this particular parcel. And, but they total up for both of those nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and four cents. We had to correct that.
Very good. I need a motion to accept the two real estate tax exonerations for reason of office error. Which is total value of exoneration, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and four cents.
They're moved. Seconds.
Properly moved in second. Any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. And Larry, we have two applications for consolidation of property.
Yes, sir, we do. First one I have is for Wori Legro, Legro, I guess. They had four parcels in the Martinsburg District, map seventeen. There are parcel sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, and sixty-eight. And we put them together so she could just get one tax bill. So we consolidated that. I need your approval on that. You want me to go ahead and give you the second one?
Oh, yes, sir, we can do it.
For Kenneth Stanley, they had three parcels in the Jarrettstown District, map twenty-five, parcel fifty-five, fifty-four, and fifty-six. Same reasons we put it together so you'd just get one tax bill. So need your approval on those.
Very good. I need a motion to approve the consolidation of those two separate properties as the assessor just mentioned.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Board and meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
I don't have anything to report to them. Yes, sir.
Very good. Mr. Kenneth?
Yes, sir. I didn't mention last week, but I did attend on Sunday, September 22nd. The Ruhr Tan, Tom Hough Ruhr Tan 65th Anniversary Ice Cream Social. And they asked me to speak a little bit because of the donation that they made back in 2001 to the county of seventeen acres for the park that's there. They actually received from Jim Rickert's family, passed recently, was on the park board for many years. Fifteen thousand dollar donation to the club. And then somebody matched it, a relative of Jim's matched it. So they received thirty thousand. I think they're gonna try to appropriate some of that money to the park itself. So there'll be an improvement to county property. Last Thursday, after our meeting here last Thursday, the ambulance has already met. Of course, the excitement there is about to do ambulances that they'll be receiving over the next six or seven months. Would be a total of nine, which will peak a tremendous boost considering they haven't been able to have an ambulance. Seized in the last several years. So also, I've been working on, in fact, I'm submitting it today with Penny's help. We're submitting a LEDA grant request. That's a local, local economic development assistance program that the state legislature had through Senator Blair. And we're requesting fifty thousand dollars from the Martinsburg Park and Rec. That'll go towards the replacement of the hollow pavilion at War Memorial. And the match, the total project's one twenty-five and the seventy-five thousand dollar match for that fifty will. Coming from the War Memorial Park Association. Monies that have been added through the breakfast, Labor Day breakfast for several years, plus some other donations as well. So. What's neat about that is that'll be the last pavilion in that park that'll need renovated and replaced. And this will make four of them will actually be all metal pavilions. So their life expectancy. The access for elderly and disabilities will be improved. Park will be in, from in the shape of once this next pavilion is done this, this spring. So. I hope to be doing a second one here as well for the senior services in the next week. Try to get fifty thousand dollars for them to purchase some vehicles for the fleet. This past Tuesday, I had a sewer board meeting. First Keller's been there thirty years now. They just celebrated his anniversary. So the sewer board's been in place for thirty years. They started out, I don't know, a few thousand customers. There are over thirty thousand customers now. And there are up to sixty-five full-time employees at this point. So they've grown substantially, obviously, as the growth of Berkeley County continues. And then following the sewer board each, each meeting, twice a month is the Stormwater Board meeting. Richard Lewis, the attorney in Charleston, who is representing us regarding trying to get the DEP. To give us an individual permit as a co-permittee with the authority, Stormwater Authority Board. He's gonna wait another week or two. And if he doesn't get any, see any progress in moving forward, he's actually gonna file an appeal. With the DEP, which will go before the Environmental Quality Board. And next question is gonna be, well, what's the Environmental Quality Board? That is a quasi judicial board of review responsible for hearing appeals regarding the issues or denial of permits by the Western Union DEP. It's a five-member appointed board by the governor with the Senate's consent. So. That's the path that hopefully we're gonna pursue over the next several weeks, try to get our individual permit in place and some.
You had mentioned that particular appeal board. I had never heard of that.
And I hadn't either until the other night. And so I, and, and. The warrior for the Stormwater will, but I Googled it to find out the answers to what really is. And what they do is listen to the appeals that, that agencies or people file against the DEP. So it's in, it's a nonpartisan, no employees at the DEP, all done for. Hopefully we'll get a, if it goes to that point, we'll get a fair process there and maybe get moving forward on that permit.
Very good.
That's all that I have, sir.
All right. Thank you. Well, you know, the commissioner would like to congratulate Curtis on his thirty years of service. He's been a very dedicated and loyal employee of that district for quite a while. So.
He knows where every line is in Berkeley County and sewer line. He can tell you just off the top of his head. He's been there since day one. So he is a valuable employee to our community, to say the least.
And, and also, speaking of War Memorial Park, I heard on the radio yesterday. David Anderson, who serves on the Shade Tree Committee for the city, is gonna be, they've gotten a grant to get some additional trees to be planted in the park. So to replace a lot of the ones that have, that have died. But that'd be nice. It's a beautiful park, anyway. Other thing I had this week was construction meetings. Obviously, the Health Department still in the phase of getting block laid. So with all the rain, that's certainly been a slowdown out there. Hopefully, they're laying block right now, would be my guess. So they're trying to get that, get the foundation in so they can get going. Day report, the only thing we really need to finish up over there is a little bit of wiring. They're waiting on some stuff for the elevator and the paving and striping of the parking lot. That probably will do that today or tomorrow. The jail, the bank building, they'll be working on the, on the canopy to determine exactly how, how that wants to move forward. Because currently, they, they need to do some renovations on that canopy and that side entrance. So lots of, lots of things going on still.
I noticed that when you grab over the, out there, that, that depression, or they, I guess they're gonna repaint that, but you're just getting the, acting the fill underneath to be.
That's correct.
Subgrade. So it's more, better than it was.
Yeah, yeah. And it'd be finished up nice. It'll look nice. It, the whole, the whole area will be steel coated again and re-striped and look, look new again. So. But that project has come along very nicely. And really, for the most part, other than the switchgear. It's been relatively smooth. And it's, and it's been a good project. Okay, next on our agenda is our honorary county commissioner. And this morning, we have Mr. Sam Small with us from Saint Joe's School. So I'm gonna take the privilege of being able to swear Sam in this morning. You will stand, Sam?
Sam's not so small.
No, he's a, he's a big tall guy. Raise your right hand, Sam. Aye?
Aye.
You swear in a firm?
You swear in a firm.
That I will uphold?
That I will uphold.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution.
And the Constitution? Of the state of West Virginia? That I will work hard?
That I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibilities?
To fulfill the responsibilities.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner?
Of the Office of Honorary.
To which I've been appointed?
To which I've been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
My name is Sam Small. Not, I'm not small though. I'm not. I'm a rather tall individual, as I like to describe. I go to Saint Joseph's School. I am the eighth grade representative. And last year, I did a persuasive essay on why our school should have a student council. I did not know that we had a student council, but by doing that, it actually kind of revived it. It's a thing now again. And I'm now the eighth grade representative. So, rah. I am in eighth point two. We are a, Saint Joseph's, we are a very well-minded school. We are very delicate with what we do. We are very careful with what we do. And we do have events here and there. It's a very fun way to engage with the community. I am fourteen. I, I actually. But it's an honor to be here. I can't imagine, I don't, if you told me two years ago, that I would be standing right here behind this desk. That would have blown sixth grade me's mind. I would be absolutely astounded. It is truly an honor to be here. So.
We're honored to have you, Sam. Thank, thank you for being here. And thanks to the support from Saint Joe's School to, to get their students here.
Sam, if they told me three years ago, I'd be sitting here.
Okay. Well, have your seat there, Commissioner. And.
Thank you, Kelly.
If there's something along the way that, that, that you wanna mention, please get my attention and we'll, we'll hear you out.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, sir, we're almost right on the money here for a bid opening at.
Thank you.
You are, sir, it's that time of year to, for the county commission to, to request proposals, sealed bids, excuse me, for audit services. These audit services are, are different than most of your normal bids, we actually publish in the paper and distribute. The auditor's office literally gives you a list of qualified vendors, and we send the request to each and every one of them. You, I believe you have three responses, and as you can see, Steve's trying to do his best to get inside of it.
The group that did our audit last year.
Yes, sir.
Reapply.
They are.
Other than the, the bid summary.
Yeah, there'll be, it should be an amount.
Excuse me?
There should be an amount, on that, Eddie.
What else? Our first proposal is from VHM, CPA group, and it's $28,000.
Where they at, Eddie?
Huntington.
Yes. Next one is Harry and Associates, for the amount of $29,475. Penny, I was incorrect, the third one that I mentioned was a, a no response letter, they only have two bids. Okay, the next bid opening will be for the building commission audit.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice President, this is the exact same as the county commission's audit, however, for the building commission records, the same process is followed, we're presented a, a list of qualified vendors from the auditor's office, we submitted to each and every one on that, and there is one letter in there, and I hope it's not a, I can't do it letter. I hope it's a bid.
The same vendor that had the no letter in it.
I'll let you read it.
Looks like it's a, no, I can't do it, or don't want to do it.
Looks very similar to the other one.
Yeah, this is from Linda Thornburg, CPA. They will not be submitting a bid proposal at this time. Thank us for any consideration in the future.
So I'll reach out to the auditor's office and find out the next step.
Give me a, give me a new list.
Yes, sir. The important one is this one, while this is important also, it's, it's a whole lot less transactions, like two, so.
Yes, sir.
We'll figure it out.
The next one on our list, will be a couple minutes just ahead, is our snow removal RFP.
It is, so that one, as you know, we have snow removal assistance in the event we can't overcome and keep up with the precipitation. We also contract the work done at the health department, we don't do it, they have it contracted. So this covers the health department service, as well as if it's greater, then we have the ability to keep up with internally. We do have the certification of publication for it, it was in the paper, on the website, and distributed to all known vendors that have shown interest before, and seems you have one response in that, for that one.
Does it include the senior services?
It does.
It does, it does. But we, we try, we try and keep it to it also, so sometimes we don't call them, we do it.
Yeah. Hopefully it be a mild winter.
And I should mention, this is for a, a five-year arrangement with one-year renewals.
Sam, you have any weather predictions for this winter?
Weather predictions? Okay, allegedly, according to the farmer's homenac, big winter, which, I don't know, I, some people would say, oh, no, I would say, yay, because for the past few winters, we've been promised goods, good amounts of snow. Last week, or not last week, last year, the best we got, at least for around, you know, where I live in West Virginia, we got like, just a week of snow, and that was all we got. So hopefully, snow, yay, I mean, it has been pretty cold compared to the past winters around this time.
All right, there you heard it, folks, Sam has gave his predictions here.
These should be priced by a piece of equipment per hour, I believe, is what you're gonna say.
Yeah, they are. The, the first bid is from BNR Mowing and Landscaping. We have a, a cost for salt products. I'm just, I'm, I'm like, I'll go down through all of them, the, for the cost of the two-ton bag is $125, and that, that includes applying the salt. This is, the list of the equipment and the, the hourly rate, Ford V-Boss blade is $170 an hour, that's on F-550, they have a GMC C-3500, that's a $170 an hour, have a GMC $170, $170 an hour, a Boss 12-foot snow pusher, machine fees apply separate for $50 an hour, John Deere loader, a 304 loader, rubber tire loader, $225 an hour, 10-foot John Deere V-Blade loader, loader fees apply separately at $65, skid steer, $175 an hour, John Deere 4520 compact tractor, $175 an hour, John Deere 6430 tractor and loader, $225 an hour, John Deere, I'm sorry, Bobcat Toolcat, $170 an hour, tandem dump truck, $165, loader with a one-and-a-half-yard bucket, $225, skid steer with loader, 84-inch bucket, $175. F-550 dump truck with nine-foot snow plow, $175 an hour. He does have his liability insurance, he's got his references, he's got his state licensing all attached, and his contractor license. All of that is in the packet.
Impressed by his striped paper clips there. They're green and white, Christmas colors for the winters.
That's Muslim.
I say it's a Muslim color, you.
Oh, is that what it is?
I knew it was coming.
Well, I don't say much about that every now and then, but, okay, sir. Next up, we have Will Lawrence and our fiduciary supervisor. Good morning, Will.
Good morning, Commissioner. Today, we are standing with the 30 number, so. This morning, we have 30 estates for final or interim settlement for the month of October 2024. All estates proposed for settlement this morning are identical to those found in your read ahead. Additionally, all other, all of these estates proposed for settlement here this morning have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no written notice of objection to date for many interested parties of the estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released as paid in part or in full by the creditors themselves, or the estate has been declared to be insolvent, meaning the estate has no probate assets remaining to pay heirs, beneficiaries, and creditors alike. Without objection from any present interested party in the audience today, I ask for this commission's consideration for approval of the 30 estates for final or interim settlement in the month of October 2024.
You've heard requests from Will to accept a 30 approved settlements.
I make a motion to be accept the advice of our fiduciary supervisor and approve those.
It's been properly moved. And second, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As having. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we'll go ahead and just take a.
Chad, I had Chad come over if you wanted me to.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Chad, you wanna come on up? Morning, Chad, Deputy County Administrator, reply for the request of the West Virginia First Foundation grants.
Yes, sir. Community Corrections is requesting your consent to apply for two separate grants for the West Virginia First Community Foundation. The total amount of the application is gonna be $839,261. One grant is gonna be used to offset personnel costs in home confinement and community service, as well as purchase equipment for local law enforcement agencies while they continue to combat the drug crisis. The second grant is going to support the expansion of their youth prevention programs that are currently offered through the Day Report Center. The grant would work along with current HIDA funding to provide additional services for at-risk youth, and that grant request is $144,100. Both of these grants are zero-match.
Or what?
Zero-match grants.
Zero-match.
Yes.
Okay, you've heard Chad break both of those grants down, need a motion to approve the request to apply.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further questions? I, I do have a question on it, Chad, as, as we move forward with this foundation, is there, in your opinion, do you think that HIDA will look other places for their funding beings? We may not need their assistance?
I don't believe so. The West Virginia Foundation grants at this time are being offered annually, where HIDA grants are covering multiple years at a time, and are set to offset personnel. The West Virginia First Foundation grants are not structured that way, so we believe that we can obtain both of these funding sources without any concern.
That's good, because I, I want us to be able to continue to have that great relationship that's been established, you know, through Tim and this commission with HIDA, so I think it's important to us that, that they continue to help this, this area, so.
Very good. My question, and so on the home confinement officers, there's no current grant money that's paying their salaries at all?
Their salaries are currently.
That's coming out of our, our operating budget, yeah, so this would be a help to us, obviously.
Yes, sir. And just as a, just as a point of clarification, the First Foundation has offered, these are one and done, where HIDA's are multi-year on many occasions, so the First Foundation, they've adopted a process where, as of right now, all of their grants are one-time, here you go, apply again for something else or the same thing at a later date, but. Very good, okay.
Thank you.
We're ready, thank you, Chad. We're ready to cast our vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 As having, thank you. Okay, so let's go ahead and take a break. Yeah, yeah, we're gonna take a break, and we'll get a picture with our commissioner, our honorary commissioner. We're in, I have a break. We're in a break. Any further questions? Okay, just as a point of clarification, the First Foundation has offered, these are one and done, where HIDA's are multi-year on many occasions. So the First Foundation, they've adopted a process where, as of right now, all of their grants are one-time, here you go, apply again for something else at a later date. But. Very good, okay.
Thank you.
We're ready, thank you, Chad. We're ready to cast our vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it, thank you. Okay. So let's go ahead and take a break. Yeah, yeah, we'll go take a break, and we'll get a picture with our commissioner, our honorary commissioner. We're in a break.
We're all right, we're back in session, I'm sorry. Next up is the West Virginia Extension Office proclamation for 2024 National 4H Week. Yes ma'am, welcome.
Thank you, it's nice to see you this morning. National 4H Week is celebrated every year, the first full week of October. This year, it begins on this coming Sunday and will run through Saturday. Whereas, 4H youth across the nation are leading efforts to solve problems in their communities and make a difference for their futures. This admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young West Virginians to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of their society. And whereas, 4H is the largest youth development organization in the nation with six million young people, 4H in West Virginia claims one in every five youth are involved in a 4H program, while Berkeley County's 4H program reached over 700 youth enrolled and over 5,000 indirectly last year in the county through schools, clubs, camps, and fairs. Additionally, over 250 adult volunteers dedicating their time to building life skills of our young people. Whereas, 4H as part of the West Virginia University Extension Service is a program where youth learn through opportunities that provide them hands-on experiences in 4H's program priorities, STEM, healthy living, workforce development, agricultural experience, and leadership. Whereas, 4H has connected youth and their communities with the innovative research and resources from our nation's 106 land-grant universities and colleges for more than 100 years. Now therefore, we, the Berkeley County Commissioners of Berkeley County, West Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of October 26, 2024 through October 12, 2024 as National 4H Week in Berkeley County. We urge the people of this community to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program that enhances our young people's interests in their futures as part of Berkeley County 4H Youth Development, and to join us in recognizing the unique partnership between our county and our state university system.
Thank you. You know, this commission has supported 4H for a number of years, a very long time, and we're proud to be able to do that. We know the importance of the investment of 4H. We see it. The good thing that I recognize about 4H, which I was not involved in, I was in scouting, what I really appreciate about 4H is that it's generational. The parents, the grandparents have seen the values, they get their children, their grandchildren involved, and it's a tremendous opportunity for children to learn and be part of a very good organization in Berkeley County, so.
Unfortunately, and to say that it's generational. My current boss, Mikey Whitaker, who's on vacation this week, was involved in 4H youth and he's now my boss. It is definitely generational. And the people that are active carry it with them their entire lives. They're thrilled to be able to keep that group of volunteers and members. We appreciate your support.
Well, you know, I know Mr. Callett and Mr. Whitaker were very involved with the extension of the water service to the youth fairgrounds this past summer, you know, but it goes, 4H goes much more than just the youth fair those times. You guys are working the entire year round.
We've been, we've been working closely with the school system trying to bring programming to kids elementary through high school, through STEM activities that we have developed, and just wish we had enough time. See with every child, but as Berkeley County has grown, our resources for being able to reach those kids have stretched thinner and thinner, so. But we do appreciate the commission's support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a great day to congratulate again. No, 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 no. That's not happening, you. What do we do? Please step in my house, how are you?
One, two, three. How, how?
There you go.
What we used to do, you give them a big hand, we'd do this. But I live on Camp Frame Road and have for 44 years now, so. So in the summer, I get to hear them singing around the campfire. I always went to sports camps growing up, but I joined 4H one year just so I could go to 4H camp, and it was the most fun I ever had in my life, at that point in my life, so it was awesome.
That's a high performance.
Yeah, and my daughter went every year through her whole, you know, late elementary, middle school years. It was a great experience for her, so it was wonderful. They do, y'all do a great job with that.
I will tell you a story. Three times.
We didn't expect you not to tell one.
Camp Frame didn't always have a pool, did it?
It did not, no. We swam in the creek the year I was there.
And you all know Mr. Bob, and some of his boy scout friends would come watch us swim on the side of the creek. But there are advantages to not having a pool. But yeah, but one day there was a snake that had balled me, and that was the West Ham.
Okay, well, we'd like to thank you for what you do and congratulate you on all your great successes throughout the years, and there are many. So I do need a motion to adopt the proclamation.
I would like to make that motion if we adopted proclamation for the National 4H Week for 2024.
I'll second.
Then properly moved and seconded, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There you go.
Hey, here's your question. If you were listening to what she said, what Suzanne said, they asked me how many members we've had.
Seven hundred.
I said Suzanne will know, she bet it.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred. Good job.
But there's also 5,000 attached, so.
So that's contact, that's how much contact we have, whether it's through fairs or in school, programming that is visible. Anybody want to take a picture?
I was in Delaware the week I was in camp. Yeah, is anybody, any Delawares here?
Yes.
All right, yeah.
All right, we're back in session.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, have a good day. And next up is Amy Surball, Director of Programming, Children's Home Society of West Virginia. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
How are you?
We're doing well.
Well, again, I'm really happy to have the pleasure of seeing you once a year.
Yes, ma'am.
But I'm here this morning as a representative of Children's Home Society. Victoria's House Child Advocacy Center is hoping to apply for grant funding to the West Virginia First Foundation. This is the first opportunity that we have to apply for that funding. The foundation identified Child Advocacy Centers as one of the core folks to apply for that funding, so we are happy to take that opportunity. At Victoria's House Child Advocacy Center, the majority of the children that we see there experience serious physical and sexual abuse. However, recent trends over the last 10 years have shifted that in addition to physical and sexual abuse, we're also seeing poly victimization, that they are exposed to substance abuse as well. So our average of those children is about 58% of children that we see when we're screening them for sexual abuse or physical abuse, they've also experienced parental substance abuse in the home. In addition to that, in our grant application to the West Virginia First Foundation, we're asking for funds for our foster care program. Our permanency program needs desperately another home finder to open and license foster care homes in this area. We license homes in Berkeley-Jefferson and Morgan County. We currently have 53 families that can open their homes to foster children. There's almost 6,000 children in West Virginia foster care right now, and that is not enough homes in this area. So we're asking in this, in this funding application for $200,000 total to be split between three programs total. That's our Child Advocacy Center, our permanency program, and our Independent Living Program. With our permanency program, we're asking to fund another home finder. We don't have the budget to do that, but that will allow us to get out there more to help families get through the licensing process and to open more homes to place more children in when they do have to come into care. Our permanency program supports the reunification process. We do that through operating three visitation rooms, making sure that once parents do come into the system of the abuse and neglect process, they can still, when it's safe, have visits with their family or with their children. We have case aides that facilitate those visits in-house. Right now, 51% of the children that are in foster care have, are in that, are in foster care because of parental substance abuse. So we feel that that makes us appropriate in applying for these funds through the West Virginia First Foundation. The third program that we're asking for some funds is through our Independent Living Program. The Independent Living Program in the Eastern Panhandle supports children who are transitioning out of foster care, who have aged out of that foster care system. So before our Independent Living Program, there were not a lot of resources for these teens and these youth. Once they turned 18, they were left on their own. Now, our Independent Living Program is in our second year here in Martinsburg. We serve Berkeley-Jefferson and Morgan. Youth who are aging out, before they turn 18, we start working with them to identify what track they want to go on. If they want to go into a university or a college, we put them on that track and they're not appropriate for the Independent Living Program. But if they want to go into a trade or right into the workforce, we start working with them to help them identify independent living in an apartment, start helping them learn how to budget, start helping them learn how to do simple things that these youth don't have, getting a social security card, getting a copy of their birth certificate, getting a driver's license or a form of ID. Before they can even open a bank account to receive a stipend, they have to have an ID, and most of these kids don't even have their birth certificate or a social security card, they've never seen that document before. So our case managers and our social worker in that program work with them to kind of get their life on track and teach them those, those living skills. Those youth that age out of foster care are the most susceptible and vulnerable to fall into substance abuse. So this is a prevention-based program that we're operating to try to prevent that. So I'm asking here today for just your letter of support and supporting us to ask the foundation for those funds. We have our application ready to submit, we're just waiting for the county commissioners in each county to let us know whether they support our ask in that, so that's why I'm here today.
Thank you, and thank you for the work that you, that you all do. It's a shame that we even have to have your services, truthfully, but I'm so glad that we do, because a lot of children need your help.
I can't wait for a day that I don't need to have a job in this field, that we've remedied and rectified this situation.
It's unfortunate I don't think that's going to happen.
Me either, but.
Continue to grow.
Yeah.
Repeat again, you said there were 6,000 children in West Virginia in foster care?
Just about, I think the number is like 5,900 and something, but.
How many in Berkeley County?
How many in Berkeley County? I don't, I don't know that number. I know for our agency, we currently have 37 children just in our homes in Berkeley-Jefferson and Morgan, and we're one of the child placing agencies. I don't, I know too, I operate our children's shelter over in Romney. We currently have 14 children that are just living in hotels right now because they don't have a place to go. The youngest child that's at a hotel is seven years old because we cannot find a home for that child. So I mean, we are in a crisis situation, we don't have enough appropriate foster care homes or beds for these kids.
So I have a question. So these funds that they request, would that be for all of West Virginia, or for our region, or just Berkeley County, or what would these funds be for?
The 200,000 that we're asking is for our programs right here in the Eastern Panhandle for Victoria's House Child Advocacy Center. The budget breakdown that we have is about 130,000 for that program, and then the rest is for Home Finder, a Home Finder to open homes in Berkeley-Jefferson and Morgan, and then our Independent Living Program serves Berkeley-Jefferson and Morgan. So our ask is just for the Eastern Panhandle for the foundation.
Yeah, and HD, if you remember, we're part of that Region Two.
Right. That's what I was saying, I knew it was a region, I didn't know how much they cover of that region, yeah.
Yeah, so in our region.
So your total ask is how much, 200?
200,000.
200,000.
Any further questions? Okay, I need a motion to adopt the resolution of support.
Approve the letter.
Approve the letter of support?
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of support for CASA.
I would second that.
I'm sorry, that, that is for a home society.
Home society, okay.
Yes, sir. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
I apologize, on the agenda it said CASA, that's.
Yeah, they're next.
They're coming.
Yeah, Michelle.
Oh, 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 okay, okay. Oh, I see it, my bad.
It's okay.
All right.
All right, next we've got Gary Wine for a bid recommendation.
So as the commission will recall, you approved a new home confinement officer many, many, many months ago, and in Tim's effort and due diligence, he just got to the point in advertising process and has the staffing where it needs to be, and now he's faced with needing a vehicle for the officer to use. We don't have anything in the, in the pool that's available to just give, and historically, when you started, the new positions, you've placed them in a new vehicle, it just makes the most sense. You went out to bid, you had four responses of those, one for a Jeep Cherokee, two for Ford Explorers, and one for a Ford Escape. The Ford Escape was from Parsons Ford with one deviation from the specifications in the bid. We actually published four-wheel drive, but the Escape is an all-wheel drive. We're fine, we have plenty of Escapes in the fleet, and they, they do just fine. So the recommendation is, is that you accept that deviation and accept the bid from Parsons Ford for a 2024 Ford Escape all-wheel drive in the amount of $31,331, which is also the most cost-effective purchase.
All right, you've heard the results of the bid opening.
I would make a motion that we accept a bid recommendation for the midsize SUV vehicle for our home confinement.
Home confinement.
Home confinement program, yeah.
In the amount of $31,331.
Correct.
Been.
I'll second.
Been properly moved and seconded, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, thank you. Gary, next up is Community Partnership Memorandum on broadband.
Yes, sir. So as you well know, the county commission solicited and became a partner with Frontier Communications of West Virginia for a broadband expansion project in western Berkeley County. Frontier is now in the process of applying for more grant monies to service more Berkeley County folks. This isn't a, this isn't a partnership for grant application, this is a letter of support for them to apply. They're after some of the bid money, and it's, it's a general request, a broadband equity access development bid. And the person who we interacted with from Frontier called and asked and said, you know, would the county commission be willing to give us a letter of support for us to apply for board, for bore bid monies? And obviously, that would be east of North Mountain because you already made application to do the west side. In this, really the only caveat, there's no funding commitment, it talks about how you've already committed a million dollars, it talks about everything you've done before. It does ask, and it does have a statement in there, that any permits that would be relative out of here that you would, just like the first one, that you would be willing to waive those fees. It's just a letter of support saying you kind of follow suit of what you did before.
So, so we know for sure that the northeastern portion of our county is very underserved with broadband.
As well as southeastern.
So have they, or will they be doing a study to see where these services will go?
That's exactly what this, as part of the application for the grant, the study is included in that. If you remember, when we did the west side, that was, that was, we have, we had a grant to do that, right? So that's exactly what this is. So all in, probably, and my gut tells me, and even though it's now been over a year since you signed the private, public-private partnership agreement with them, we've not seen anything happen physically. A lot of the hurdles and a lot of the problems are at the permitting level and the right-of-way level, and we all know what those agencies, what agencies we're speaking of, so the processes are in play. This pot of gold that the federal government issued for broadband expansion to billions of dollars, I'm not sure anybody still understands exactly how it's going to pan out. So they're in, they're learning the rules and creating the rules and modifying the rules as they go, so it's a difficult process, it's not cut and dried, and it's everyone's very first time through, so you have a concrete agreement, things are moving, just not at the pace, obviously, that the folks in the valley would like to see, as poor Steve asks all the time, you know, I got a, I got a question, I got a call, and I'm like, I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but it's happening, it's just very, very, very slow. This would just start.
The thing was that they were going to hope to have it done within two years.
Correct, and that agreement is still there, once the permitting and the approvals are given. They're still committed to a two-year completion date once they start, it's just getting started is the process.
Yeah, I know, and we were very excited about this program, especially, you know, for the children in the, in the valley with their schools and stuff. The experience that we were through with COVID.
Do you think this east side of the North Mountain would take place and get, and get in motion? Do you think this, this east side of the North Mountain would take place and get, and get in motion before the west sides are completed, or...
Oh, no, I could not even imagine, they're applying for the same pool of money.
Okay, so...
And, you know what I mean, so no, sir, I can know. But it would all depend on right-of-ways and easements and construction. So if they already have that stuff in certain places, and they go and, and get, make application and get granted an award, you could see motion there. So I think we can all, we all can concede to, west of that mountain's much more rural than east of it. It doesn't really matter whether you're north or south. So this just is the county commission of Berkeley County staying committed to broadband expansion. And you have, and you may see other vendors ask for these same types of letters of support, who knows? But this is just supporting them in their request for additional bead funding.
So Gary, is this that program that they talked about at the auditors convention we were at?
It's exactly what it is, HD. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. It's definitely needed desperately, so I need a motion.
Yes, sir, I entertain a motion.
That we provide a letter of support...
Yes, sir.
For the Community Partnership Memorandum to get broadband in eastern, east of North Mountain in Berkeley County, as well as the west side of North Mountain.
I'll second that.
And that contract, or that letter will be in support of Frontier.
Of Frontier.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's been properly moved in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have. Okay, next thing we have, Gary, is 25, 26 budget timeline.
Here we are, feels like we just started that. And, you know, we're through the first quarter of the current fiscal year. And historically, this county commission has done a really good job of setting the expectations and getting it carved in stone. It helps outside agencies, it helps constitutional officers. And in these dates we're going to read, some of those are mandatory by code. So there are certain things you have to do, no matter what. So I'll just kind of walk through it. So it is for fiscal year 25, 26 budget. If the county commission sees fit, we'll begin the documentation and get you ready for distribution of the budget packets to start on November 15th. The next on, we would set delivery for outside agency budgets to be due in January 13th or 25th with department, or with budget hearings starting on January 16th. The internal budgets would be due on January 24th. Then we would, we would review at January the 30th, 25th, county commission meeting, we would review budget and revenue expenditures to date, as well as estimated for the next fiscal year. Also, on January 30th, 2025 begins your border review and equalization. By code, you have to open border review and equalization no later than February 1st. Unless you want to do it on the 1st, on Saturday, we back that up to January 30th, which is Thursday. And then you have to convene every three days, not to include weekends, and end, not to go sign any diaphragm, no later than February 15th. So you'll see the dates listed there. The next thing that happens, beginning in February on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you'll do budget hearings. By code, the assessor owes you by March the 3rd their certification of values and rollback forms. If all goes well, and we've done all of our due diligence prior to that, on March the 6th, you'll meet with the elected officials, and everyone will be on the same page with budgets. The following Thursday, the 13th, you'll adopt the budget, which is due to the state no later than the 30th. The sooner we get it there, and HD and Steve, you both heard them say, the sooner you get it to us, if you made mistakes, we can get it back to you, and it won't be official that you messed up. So the sooner we can get it down there, the happier they are. And then, remember, in March and April, we have to do the advertisements for it. And then by April 15th, or actually, on this third Thursday, Tuesday, you'll lay the levy. So, starting in November 24 and ending in April of '25 is the cycle of the budget process. As you well know, your fiscal starts July 1, and we'll take off again and be doing this at the blink of an eye.
It's a rather aggressive schedule.
It, there, there's no room for error in, in lots, in time-wise, there's no room for error. It barely fits in there. And as you go to these county commission meetings around the state, they're like, oh, yeah, we do that, we do that in March, they bring them all in one day and talk and approve it. It takes you the better part of six months, start to finish, just to get it all organized and orchestrated. You have created a very, very open, faces the public, you have lots of time for conversations with the outside agencies, with their constitutional officers. So there's a lot of back and forth and a lot of discussion, so it's, it's not just one and done.
I think it gives us a great opportunity to learn and continue to learn about these organizations and what they do and the good things that they do in this community. It's a, it's a good opportunity to learn. Okay, need a motion to approve the 25, 26 budget timeline.
I'll make a motion to approve the 25, 26 budget timeline.
Seconded.
And seconded, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have. Legislative summit.
Yes, sir. It's, again, the time of year where this body historically has held a legislative summit for the past, Penny, 10? 10 years? You, you have held it off-premise because you didn't have a facility that you can, you could do, and you've had to spend monies to, to rent and so on and so forth. Well, you now have a multipurpose room that can seat about 90 people. So I'm proposing to you that you leverage the Dunn Building multipurpose room. It's designed and was configured for just this kind of meeting. What we need to figure out is a date and time, so we can begin to let the folks know that you want invited and also give you some time to create an agenda and get prepared, if you so choose to have one this year.
Well, I think it's important that we, absolutely important that we have one. Obviously, you can't do anything after the election.
Right.
And you've got, you know, some holidays in between there. But I don't have a date picked out, I don't know if you do.
Well, I mean, the, if you look at, just if you try and get through the election and let it settle, so the first, probably the safest for everyone, before you get into halls, would be the first week of December. So maybe December 5th, that's a Thursday. It gives you plenty of time, we don't have anybody on any calendar saying they've not been here, but who knows, sometimes they just decide they're not coming, right? Mr. Barnard, I hope you're listening. It's the commission, I mean, you've always tried to do it on a Thursday. We don't have to make that decision today, if you want to postpone it and think about it in next week's meeting, let...
Yeah, we'll nail the date, for sure, we'll nail the date.
Okay, so we won't schedule today, Penny, we'll wait until next Thursday.
Just hold the room.
We'll, we'll get it on the, we'll make it tentative for the 5th, and if that worked, great, and if not, we'll move it. And I, I'm assuming everyone's comfortable with having it here?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that room is very, very nice.
Yeah.
Good chance to show it off to them.
Correct. Ma'am, we can do anything, sure.
Good morning.
Definitely need to have it though.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Okay, Michelle, so let's just hold off until...
Next week?
Next week, and to nail the date down for our legislative...
Put it back on my items next group, thank you.
You're right on time. Yeah. Michelle Sutcliffe, you're up.
Thank you all for meeting with me this morning. I'm here to request a letter of support for the... We are expanding our program to incorporate a curriculum, mentoring support. And we're, the cool thing we're doing is we're expanding the group of youth we've already been doing in Jefferson. It includes juvenile service, youth, and youth that are drug caught. So the vast majority, it was Judge Cohib who had... Because the vast majority of these youth were JA, black youth. So well over half of them, so they have that kind of background. The history and success we've had, we've come... We've been growing this program over the past four years, it's really been incredible. We've had three youth on the college. We're working very closely with Argos, and fracturing people on a... So the fact that we can fall into this... Raise a focus, man, really cool. I mean, I don't really know where the competition is, and we have a shot at this, but they're, we're going to be spending four grants per region, or, you know, per court. It's going to cost them exactly what we do. And the other, I think, unique kind of approach to this, that's different than maybe schools doing this, is for better or worse, we're court mandated. So we're on the case. And the participation is really high. We have 20 kids, really on their own fruition, coming once a month on Sam's Facebook. That's pretty incredible. They can't wait for the next... Argos is a older skating party with these kids. So not only are they being put through curriculum with leadership, substance intervention, we're building a cohort of themselves and getting... They have these shared experiences. It's kind of a really cool setting to really make an... That's the general idea of the grant. Programming, quantity of programming with the kids, the curriculum, because you have... Where we're getting the children.
Well, you know, once again, you know, we had Amy Surball in earlier, just, just a few minutes ago. But, you know, just, once again, you know, thank you all for what you do. I was not aware, but I'm very pleased to hear that the corporate support, P&amp;G and Argos, and as they say, it takes a village.
Oh.
And so just having that corporate support is really important.
Amazing, I mean, they have been... And not only do they give us money, but... With the youth, they're...
Wow. Yeah, speaks volumes.
And peace around our world, funding our grants, bless, remember... Lots of commitment.
Absolutely, great. Okay, we need a letter of support for CASA to apply for the West Virginia First Foundation plan.
You don't ask, you never receive, so... Make a motion that we provide a support letter, their application to...
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved in a second, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Believe you did it, sir.
I think that's going to wind us down. Any items from the public? Make it noted, there, there is nobody from the public. Mr. Boyd?
Make a motion recess.
We're in recess. Thank you.